Can you hear me, Kate?
Yes, Donna, I can hear you.
Well, I guess the motto in Melanie's
County Visina.
Awesome.
Mayor Zinski. County Luddy. County Panessa. County Russell. County Yonaga. County Vich. County Vich is on. Yes, she's on. Yeah, she's up at Capitol, but she's not. I can't help it if they come on and they don't move.
You good, Kate?
Yep, you're good.
So now we have our audience of citizens. Citizens at this point in time, so anyone in the audience here or the Zoom land wants to talk to us now, give it a thought. Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate that. Dan Thurston, sixteen, Conlon Way. I know part of the agenda tonight, Commission on the Community Center, Community Senior Center for the Town of Berlin is going to present their findings. I thoroughly enjoyed and blessed to go to a number of those meetings over the last few months and see the committee at work. I just wanted to say thank you to the members of the Commission for all the hard work they put in for gathering information and data for the town regarding that process. I also wanted to point out two things that have come up in the last few weeks and was reminded about the importance of the project. The Berlin tennis and basketball courts at Brolin High School that were newly renovated, done very, very nicely, are starting to see their influx of people for the spring. And if you ever have a chance to go down there in the after of the evenings between now and September, October, and see the number of people that they bring into the town of Berlin. And as we talk about this project, I think it's important to keep in mind that this community slash senior center can have that same impact. And the other thing I wanted to point out, I was lucky enough to go to the Berlin High School Hall of Fame induction ceremony for an honor of Rex Smith last week. And the common theme hearing from all of the members who are being inducted was the incredible amount of support that they felt from the town of Berlin. Incredible facilities that the town of Berlin provided them. Specifically mentioned Sage Park, football fields, the new training facilities at Berlin High School, and the youth programs in town. And I think this community slash senior center is an opportunity for the town of Berlin to step up and offer the same kind of support to our seniors and to our youths in programming, all in all. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the New York City citizens? Yes, sir.
Dan, you're a little taller than I am. Tim Thurston, one hundred Sawmill Drive in Berlin. I'd also like to say, first of all, a hard thank you to the committee. I've seen firsthand the time that they devoted to it, time spent away from their kids, grandkids, families. All for the, really, the betterment of the town of Berlin, I would say thank you. I really appreciate her, right? The history of the community center dates back over thirty years. The town's been talking about the community center for over thirty years. About thirty years ago, nineteen ninety-nine, we built the community center below the library, what was supposed to be a ten-year band-aid. Well, now it's twenty-two years later. It's, it's really time to look at the community center. These guys on the committee did a lot of work. And what I would appreciate is that hard work is looked at. Look at these people as the experts on the they've gone around, they've seen, they've talked to people, they've gotten facts, figures, and everything else. If there's anybody who really knows community centers in the in the state of Connecticut, it's this, this committee. So I'd like to take with their opposing and kind of stick to it because really, who among us knows any better? All right. The need for a community center. Many years back, I was on two or three committees. And every time you looked at it, it was sixty-five to seventy-five, seventy percent of people said they were in favor of the community senior center. All right, and it really hasn't changed. To me, it is an asset and an investment in the town. It's a benefit to the town. What it would do, I know what it would do for the sake of the town, I don't know what it would do for the town your house values and anything else, but I can imagine young families, middle side, middle-aged families moving in saying, hey, Berlin has this community center. This is a town we should look at, this is a town we should, you know, get involved in. The community senior center has to be, has to be a centered place where everybody can use it. It has to be intergenerational, it can't be excluding seniors, it can't be excluding young kids. You know, I thought, and I haven't seen the proposal, but to me, across the high school made more sense than anything because it was close to seniors, it was close to the high school. And the, the things that are put in the community center also have to be, you know, for everybody, a community senior center. Right? A pool that is a competition pool that could be used for young kids, old kids, life-saving school. A therapy pool that could be used for seniors and people that were, you know, say accidents and everything else that that, you know, need to work on their legs and their arms and everything else. By the way, I'm a senior. And I, I plan on using this facility quite a bit between pickleball and therapeutic and I'm not as used to that. Look at, when we're looking at this and the cost of it, keep in mind, this is a fifty to a hundred-year building. It's not something that we're going to go ten years or fifteen, fifteen years. It's a building that's going to be around fifty to a hundred years. And finally, I'd like to, as I said, I'd like to consider the work from the, from the committee. More importantly, I'd like, who was the town council? To give the voters of the town of Berlin a say. Let's not kick this down to another committee, another town council or anything else. Let's look at this proposal, let's get this proposal on the table, get it out to the town voters in one way or the other, let the town voters decide. Thank you.
Yes.
You try and leave my turn sometimes. Tim, I'm with you here. Jan Zaborski, sixty-three, Grand U R N O. I, again, would like to support the Parks and Recreation Commission on the amount of time and energy they put into this project. I totally agree with everything that's been said so far, but something I think we're missing out on as an educator in town, we're hearing about the mental health of both the kids, the adults, the seniors. There's been a lot of research that a combination of a senior younger group of people together does benefits for both the older people, of which I think I'm a senior center person now, I haven't admitted it yet. And the younger kids as well, and that's something that I think is really important for us as a community to take into account that, I mean, come into a school sometime and see some of the issues the kids are going through. They need a release, they need to be able to work with more adults who can help them, support them as they get older. This project seems awesome, if you can, if you combine the seniors and kids and the people in the middle, it's a benefit to everything.
Thank you. Anyone else for comments? No one in the audience on Zoom, anybody? None, go ahead and close the audience of citizens, thank you all for your input, appreciated. Just had the mayor's update real quick, I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things. Chief McNally was appointed to the the Emergency nine-one-one State Commission, so congratulations to him on that. And just, I wanted to mention a couple of our police officers too. Detective Brett Kelly has been selected as the best, as, as the best program, as the program that they've instituted Employee of the Year for twenty-twenty-one. And we have Officer Megan Misanti has been selected as that program's Rookie of the Year for twenty-twenty-one, so congratulations to them. As we know, Berlin has a outstanding police department and, you know, they're certainly keeping that up with our new officers. I want to mention this, talking about moving to Berlin being the place to live, I don't know if you picked up on this, but real estate website, areavices.com, it's on Channel thirty news is where I saw it. So they have the top twenty-five places to live in Connecticut. Found it interesting. Of course, number one and two are Old Greenwich and Cosco Greenwich, I bet. Maybe not quite there, however, in the top twenty-five, we are, Berlin is number ten. So I thought that was pretty good, livability score thirteen percent lower than state average on the crime, cost of living three percent lower than the state average. So I thought that was pretty impressive. Below us was Glastonbury, Westport, a lot of towns around that we thought might, might beat us out, so we're doing well, we're doing great to be in the top ten places to live in Connecticut, that's, that's, I thought that was something to point out and, and, you know, it's we all know it's a great town and the town's working great. So we'll all try and keep it up and keep it as a very desirable place to live. I also just wanted to mention, we had the Gold Star Ceremony last Saturday, which the Gold Star families, it worked out well, well-attended, a great honor for our town, we're the only one in the state. And it was there, the organization, Herschel Woody Williams, who was the last remaining Medal of Honor winner from World War Two, he was, won his Medal of Honor in Iwo Jima. And he couldn't make it, he's ninety-six years old, but he's still doing well, his grandson came to speak, which, which, which was great, and you know, he's, his foundation has put these Gold Star memorials around the country, I think there were forty-something states now, I think they're pushing to get it, obviously, one in every state, some states have a couple of them, this, I believe is going to be the only one in Connecticut. So it was an honor to have them come to Berlin certainly and you know, look at our Veterans Park and realize what a great venue that was, and the Veterans Commission had a lot to do with that. Our Park and Rec Department, grounds crew takes care of that park as well, so it's a great honor and to honor the families that have, you know, that have lost their family members in wartime, so they want to remember very well, so another, another great destination, I'm sure, for a lot of families that will be visiting the memorial through the year, so that, that's great. All right, so that's all, I just wanted to mention those things tonight, so we'll, we'll get on with our consent agenda. We have, buddy. I'm not going to read them all, most of them are donations that we've taken for the library, for the golf course, donations for diving, for the police department. Waving Traffic Control Office of the World, Peach Ukraine Relief Fund, which is placed in East Berlin. Seventeen hundred dollars. Oh, they got the banner, so we want to fund, the Historical Society came to us. And they want to fund these banners for the three-hundredth anniversary of Kensington. And we're going to, of course, grant an exception on that, hopefully if we vote on this, the town of Berlin flying flag, allow these images, there's different images of Berlin that will have on the flags around in Kensington in our downtown district, so that'll be great, and then there's another donation for the Berlin Animal Control, so we have nine items on it. Consent agenda, I, I assume all the councillors have, have read the agenda. And any questions or comments? Hearing none, go ahead and take a motion.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for seven-nine, something to do by items tonight.
Thank you, second on that. Any other comments or questions? So moved. All right, on to business.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, councillors and everyone else. First item on the agenda is permission to repair and clean damaged headstones at Leck's place, the cemetery. Eagle Scout project. Want to say something about it, Kate?
Council, my name is Paul Hendrick and I'm a life scout from shoot four-four-one. I'm currently working on completing my Eagle Scout project, which will involve the maintenance of headstones at Ledge Cemetery, which is a small cemetery near Four Rod Road. I've already presented my project twice in front of the Berlin Cemetery Committee and received their approval. And I received the approval of my local scouting council. I come here today to request the additional formal approval of my project from the town council. To give a quick summary of my project proposal, my project revolves around the cleaning and repairing of damaged headstones at Ledge Cemetery. The headstone repairs should last at least ten to twenty years, while the process of cleaning the headstones should remove decades' worth of crime. I'll be working with the assistance of my scoutmaster's brother, who is a carpenter by trade and has much experience working with the epoxy and equipment utilized to repair these stones. Just to be clear, I am not requesting anything of the council other, other than their approval. All the necessary supplies have already been purchased with the assistance of myself, my friends, and my project coach. This project will not only beautify the cemetery, but honor the history of Berlin. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's great. Another great Eagle Scout project, we've had so many over the years, it's, they're just, they're just wonderful, the things that they've done for the town and obviously, made, made their troops and the scouts and the town proud, so that, that's another, another great project.
Mayor, if I may, the Cemetery Committee is a hundred percent behind this, as we've mentioned. Several of the members are at the Veterans Commission meeting that is scheduled tonight, so they couldn't be here tonight, otherwise they wouldn't have been.
Again, wonderful, wonderful project, as, as they all have been. We wish you, you know, good luck and get it finished, and I know, I know you and your colleagues have done a great job. So thanks for coming in. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead and take a motion.
Sure, we moved to grant permission for Paul Hendrick and his Eagle Scout project to perform the cleaning and repair of damaged heads, headstones at Ledge Cemetery.
Thank you, second on that. Thank you, any other comments or questions?
Three more splints.
Are we not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, she carries. Good luck. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Tonight, our number two is an increase in the purchase order, we have balancing services. And the Berlin High School HVAC system, Doug's luck is here to, yeah.
You just started your council for it. As remembered, during, back to school, we had some requirements. Get the buildings back open, there are a lot of testing, balancing, commissioning of the systems. Last summer, the extreme heat humidity, we learned limitations of the building outside of design criteria, had to make a few adjustments, just to kind of mitigate some issues we were having, so a few areas of the building went into kind of a slight negative, so we had to rebalance a few areas, make sure that we had a positive pressure, understand the humidity levels, some condensation issues, so we got to get the crew back in for a few adjustments, but we're, we're back on track, we noted different levels of operating percentages related to CO2, occupancy, the extremes of the heat and humidity with the chiller, so it was a good learning experience for us and be noted of it for what's to come. Constantly learning the building, even after ten years.
All right. Thank you, Doug, appreciate it. Questions for Doug? Will I take a motion?
Yeah. Move to increase purchase order number two-two-one-nine-four-zero for Air Balancing Services Company of Long Beach, Connecticut, up to twenty-five thousand dollars as needed for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, utilizing the Yukon Testing, Adjusting, and Balancing Contract Number DS zero-six-zero-one-one-six-one-one for work related to Berlin High School HVAC.
Thank you, second on that. Thanks. Any questions, other questions for Doug? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion, Carrie.
Thank you. Tonight, our number three is a warning of two bids, utilities, related services.
Yes, so we have a few more go up for RFP related to on-call services for trades, related to building repairs, projects. Do a lot of work with environmental engineering, along with, excuse me, as well as me, certainly works, so these two contracts will allow us to do some work for the rest of this fiscal year, along with some projects coming up next fiscal year, so we have a good response for both RFPs, so also I have confident vendors to utilize on our circles.
Great. Any, any questions for Doug? I will go ahead and take a motion, and this is clearly another question. We'll try, yes.
With the threshold we have now, you and your all the time raise the threshold for non-voting requirements. And there's been a rumor that we might look at the charter. Helpful if we change that threshold in turn? Should we leave it the way it is?
What, what we found, I think, yeah, I think our departments will speak, speak to that. What, what we found, just in this day and age, and the scope of work, the magnitude, labor rates, materials costs, we seem to find ourselves between a ten and twenty-five thousand dollar threshold for larger projects. Yeah, that, that would certainly help us continuity, efficiency, move things along that certainly, if we, if we do get multiple proposals, quotes, bids, we find
I know that, but still that threshold's so low.
And the biggest language that we find that the challenge is the cumulative language. So throughout the fiscal year, you know, two thousand, two thousand, two thousand, next thing you know, we're at, we're at ten, we have to increase P O, so this design call rates help establish that, you know, if, if the repairs exceed the ten thousand, we can keep moving. But certainly the bigger projects that are capital, those usually go out the bid, but just to help for operations and general maintenance throughout the year with multiple town departments, if we could get up to that twenty-five thousand, which I think is in conjunction with the state does.
That's correct, Jeff.
That would certainly help us things a little smoother, not, not bother you as much for P O increases.
Oh, we're happy to have you come. Yeah. You know, we tried, we tried to change that in last charter change, but it got, I think, lumped in with one big question and had many, many things, so it didn't work, but, yeah, as we proceed to a new one, we'll, I think that's an important one to change.
Very good, responsible oversight, so.
Yeah.
Go crazy with the check.
Yeah. No, we know that. Okay, any other, any other questions for Doug? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay. Move to approve bid number twenty-two, thirty-two, and twenty-two, thirty-three for on-call services. Improve expenditures up to fifty thousand dollars for bid number, for bid spender for this year twenty-two, twenty-three, not to exceed the total contractual services, improve budget in each fiscal year. The following vendors, and this is in the best interest of the town. Those vendors are Cronenberger and Self Restoration, Little Rock, to the town of Masonry of Newington, Myrick Masonry of Newington, Mystic Air Quality Consultants of Brighton, Eagle Environmental of Terryville, Viraplan LLC of West Hartford, Environment Services of Meriden, Oriero Engineering Associates of Fongville, T R C Environmental Corporation of Los Angeles.
All right, take a second on that. Thank you, Charlie. Any other comments or questions? If not, but on the motion, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion, Carrie. Next up.
Right, tonight, our number two, the presentation by the Community Senior Senate Advisory Committee.
Hello, everybody. From the money sixty, Casner Drive. Stepped up here tonight as the chairperson of the Community Center Senior Center Advisory Committee. I was going to steal a line from Admiral John Stockdale, why am I, and why am I here? He said that at the nineteen ninety-two presidential debate because to show his experience in politics. And I'm kind of using that and stealing a sermon and show, you know, this was the first time I was ever on a committee like this, and many of the members that were on with us said the same thing, so it was a learning experience. So I, I just wanted to kind of briefly go through where we are, where we started, and where we are today. First of all, I want to thank all the people that were involved, all their time, the site visits, meetings, the organization that was required. That was very helpful, some members of the Commission, the town staff. So I'd like to thank the members of the Advisory Committee, which was Donna Boebe, who's here, she's the vice chair and the chair of the Park and Rec Commission. Barbara Gama, who was out here today, she's the chair of the Commission on Aging. Yeah, Dave Seer, I don't think Dave Seer is here, is the Chair of the Economic Development Commission. Mike Yonaga of town council. Tim Grady on the Board of Finance. And of course, our town, the eyes on here was Turner, or Joe, from the Director of Community Recreation and Park and Services. I got that right? And not to forget some of our other town staff that attended some of our site visits. Tina Doyle from the Senior Center, Senior Center Director. And Debbie Dennis, the Superintendent of Recreation. And also, Mr. Wood, helped out with some of the information we were looking for. So just a quick overview of July twentieth, the town council voted to create a subcommittee for the Community Senior Center. And her job was to provide factual data, recommendations to the town council. Our attorney here, just give us a heads up, you know, we were here for factual information, not to, you know, vote or argue against the project, because we really didn't have a project, we're just here to find information. You know, among our tasks, we're to visit other communities, similar facilities, lessons learned, services offered, costs, funding resources, understand the operational costs, review Berlin's debt position, and maybe the possible impact on future taxes as a project in its forward. At our first meeting, we organized and then we talked about discussion of sites to visit. So after that meetings, we started visiting sites, started in October twelfth was our first one. And we finished on January twenty-eighth, we saw nine sites, I think, was the total. We went to Bloomfield, Mansfield, Glastonbury, Newtown, Branford, Wyndham, Rocky Hill, Meriden, Y M C A, and the Putnam, Y M C A. So to me, I thought these visits were very important, had different aspects of the community here, we all looked at things differently. We all took notes, and, you know, if you haven't had a chance to see, report in the, in our appendix, some of our notes in those visits. We continued at our meetings to go through the list of the charges that were given to us. We talked to Kevin Delaney, the town Berlin Finance Director, to understand our debt and financing options. Town staff, together operation. Town staff together operation, budgets for the new facility. The Meriden, Berlin, Berlin, Y M C A came and gave a presentation on their interest in maybe putting a facility in Berlin. We talked to the building committee and architects about their conceptual design, worry about that. All our meetings were open to the public and we had some excellent input from town residents, especially Coach Thurston and Coach Jan Zagorski and the rest of the Thurston family, I think their input full use and things that they saw and tools was very helpful. There is a big appendix attached, as I know that the town council was giving that, and I know you read it all. And I'm hoping, you know, if anybody from the public wants a copy of that, I'm hoping that it's on the town website, that he will be able to get anybody a copy that they can review for themselves.
Of course, yes.
Okay. You know, just wanted to touch on a couple brief things within the report. As we all know, we were, we were given a grant, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to study this project. So far, out of that seven hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents has been spent. There is tentatively, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand and thirty-four dollars and seventy cents held for, as this project goes forward, possibly for design build package together. And there's still another four hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents, which is unspent, still certain account, which expires at the end of this year, and I think we could probably apply for extensions if we need it. I know that some people here haven't seen the report. Being the first time that was part of some point, this, I think it's pretty helpful, it's very informative. Now, we were trying to shoot for deadlines, wanted to push this forward for the council, so that you would have it ready. That's the way you want it to go. I don't know, you know, at this point, I don't know if the council has any questions, or if any of the other members of the committee here wants to come up and speak, if Jen has any words, or Donna, if you had any ones you wanted to make. I was just gonna flip through real, real quick, you know, we had the grant, talked about the grant, places we toured. You know, it was really hard to find a place exactly what we were conceptual design for, but some of them were similar, some had pools, some didn't. You know, you'll see in the list, and some have fees, some don't. We have all the fee schedules in the appendix, so the public can see what the possibility of those fees would be. It was, you know, for me personally, being in the construction industry, I looked at different things to somebody that worked for the town. So now I'm looking for maintenance issues. Going through a giant lobby and seeing cheap rocks, the ones that are thirty-three feet near, and they've got no control joints in their crack, who's gonna paint that? How are you gonna get in here? You have to shut it down. Those are my things, that's what I'm looking for, our staff are looking at, ergonomics, people that were working some of these buildings, full list of where enough outlets, there's not enough storage, so we accumulated all that information and put that in our notes, because it is very useful, you know, before you want to try and do things the right way. You know, we, we looked at the site, but we didn't really go down that, that road to review it, I think that was already been done. There was no sense in chasing that again. The site advice was the best place. So there are some questions about that, so in the report, we received information from the senior center on the current usage. We also received numbers on the usage of the community center, how many people use that. But as you go forward with the new facility, I think those numbers would change, but you'd be able to track it better. Senior center has card keys, so they can tell when comes more often than to the community center, which is more visual, you're seeing people walk through the door. We did talk to Kevin Delaney, like I said, with the financials, provided us with three different charts and how much facility would cost, what the new rate increase would be per year, under those options, based on the conceptual design. That's, you know, we did a thirty-six million dollar building, and then you broke those charts off, it was a forty million dollar chart resulting in the rate increases, and we were really not, we did that because we all know things have been increasing dramatically. There is backlog of materials and must increases of things that may be things you can't find, so that those were interesting charts to look at. There is information here from the presentation of the Y option. The dates that we are looking for, we have a list here of what we were trying to shoot for. You know, the council decides to put this forward. So we're trying to get this information for town council, if you wanted to hold information sessions for say for May seventeenth, if you wanted to have a town council public hearing in June, wanted to adopt the ordinance, the board of finance wanted to move that forward, so all those dates are in here. If we wanted to push that for referendum for this fall. But I think it may be tough. Still need to think about this more, but no one else, there was a lot of information here, but.
Frankly, you probably would get overwhelmed.
I'm just trying to look, there was great information from my school, about usage on the teams, I think that was important for us to learn. I've never saw that before, that was great. And then we had the pros and cons list for for a town facility versus another option of why. You know, we had some information here about things that are uncontrollable, that we can't foresee, like the pandemic, supply chain issues, the construction delays. Ukraine, Russian war, raising interest rates, those are unforeseen things that we can't really look at at this point. We had some unanswered questions. Things like we move forward, we really didn't discuss closing any facilities, the two pools that we have. Those projects are listed in the capital improvement projects for the town to upgrade those facilities, but we didn't go down that road to discuss what we would do, that's, that's future debate for the town council and the rest of the town. Now, we didn't talk about renovating the senior center, if another facility came in other than a town hall. We didn't talk about investigate traffic patterns and Patterson Lower Lane. And we didn't talk to any neighbors, we're not handling the store in that area. The pros and the cons, go quickly through that. For a new community center, you know, Berlin would control and operate the facility. Or be close to the high school, of course. You know, and, and a lot of people that we talked to, you know, the idea of combining a facility, intergenerational was a good idea. We also have available space, if that gets built, you have the like Mr. Thurston said, the community center sitting in the bottom of the library, the library's always been talking about expanding to that space, so you have that, it could be a plus for the town. Now, it's close to the schools. We all know that there'd be less bus for busing. Schools are gonna use that facility, although seniors would still have to be bused. There were seniors that were living in the community center building, but that's okay. Everybody felt that, you know, the proposed facility met the statements of need, both the community center and the senior center. Conceptual design that the requirements. So this one is, so you also had the cons, you know, any shortfalls in the construction would be caused by the taxpayer. Berlin's taxes would increase based on which, whatever the size of the project would be, we own that. You know, we would have to look at what other bondable projects around that list may or may not happen. Town staff and Jen put together an operating budget, which is, you know, it's a lot more than we had before, but you're looking at a new building and new ideas and new things to offer to the town, so that's, that's a plus. And some, and some of you, and some few of you was, was a kind. You know, and like I said, we have to decide what we're gonna do with the other buildings, there's traffic issues, maybe. So that's just the highlights in there, and then we had the pros and cons of the you know, outside facility like the Y M C A. The pros, we wouldn't have to bond for anything. We would build a facility. Either way, though, a town facility or a Y M C A. Private or public buildings. On town side, we wouldn't be looking at any taxes for that project, and the Y M C is a nonprofit, so they won't be paying me any tax either, right? Now, the other thing about the Y is, like I said, no bonding. We don't have to purchase any furniture or equipment unless we take a deal with them, and we're gonna fund some of the stuff that we need. Still have remaining money of the grant used, and I'm not sure how we get that. Will be used that for. Now, and the cons of outside facilities, we don't have any control of it, depends on our working agreement with them. We have a big piece of land there that, how do we work out that agreement? Be a leasing agreement, I'm not sure. So just quickly, I don't know, there's a lot more in these lists, you're all welcome to look at, I'm just trying to do this briefly. We have some conclusions and observations. Had these listed dates, so we had a bonding process, the deadlines we were trying to meet, if this was gonna go forward. You know, the project could be kicked back to the two commissions to revise and resubmit their statement of means of work with the building commission and the architect. And look at the ideas and thoughts, the ideas of the people that went to the site presentation, and about the learned ideas, maybe a reduced project could come out of that, or it can get bigger, we don't know. I think we would recommend the traffic study Patterson Way. You know, if you look at the plan that was proposed, the architect planned opposed the, another road or driveway out onto Lower Lane. It's really not part of the project, it's just future proposals. It would make sense to do that, I think, to have another entrance or exit. So that was part of our recommendation, the traffic study and evaluate the, you know, possible motor access road. You know, page six of our indicates what options were explored by this committee, but we did not evaluate additional options such as renovating existing senior center of the parking lot, renovating the existing community center. Or any other options with that. We didn't really look at an opportunity cost, using the town to its ten-point-eight acres over there. Didn't look at any other options for that. Just trying to see if anything else stands out here. That's about all we have for the report, and like I said, we have a huge appendix here. I'm not gonna go through this, has all the financial data, has the data from some of the sites we went to, the other facilities, their operating costs. It's the operating budgets, it's like that, has all our notes, has the statements of needs from the senior center and the parking wreck's commission. And that's all I got, so if anybody has any questions, I'll sit down and ask some questions, I'll answer the questions over there. If any of the commission members wanted to say anything, it's yours.
Thank you, Brendan. Appreciate it. Appreciate all of you, the job you did, thankless job, a lot of work, you know. And even with all the work you have done, we certainly appreciate it. Council of town appreciates it, and we got more work to do, we're gonna educate ourselves now on it. Look at all the, all the information that you have provided to us, which is, which is great. It's great what you've done. It's just a lot to look through, and so we're gonna have to take a little bit of time to digest them. But yet, yet, probably yet, another, now that we have this report with the, I'm sure the next step, but once we understand it and digest it a little bit, is to get to the public. We're gonna have a public hearing at some point, meeting at some point in the next hopefully, like June, later than June. Get some of this information, I have, so the public will have a chance, as well as come to any, you know, committee council, any council meeting, of course. But I would like to get a special meeting for folks to, you know, ask questions, have, you know, some of the members of the may there, as well as the council members to you know, field the questions and go over the report as the public sees that, you know, whatever they want to ask us.
Just want to mention there, really, besides, thank you, Donna Boebe, Dave Seer, and Jen. They were really the gatherers of a lot of the information, of organizing. I did start a very rudimentary PowerPoint presentation, but Donna has probably kept it to ninety-eight percent completed, so if you're gonna have another, you want to have another thing, we could have that ready for, you know, a special presentation. And that might be a better place for it than something like this, I'm just trying to introduce it to everybody.
Yeah, and I would, yeah, we've got to get a bigger forum and get the word out there, so people can come see all the wonderful work you've done, and, you know, they can make some decisions, those are the people of Berlin as well. So appreciate it, thanks for the report, thanks for the extra reading. Lots of reading to do here.
We have a larger bag in the car, if you want.
Yeah, just bring it on, just dump it right out of your hole. Dive right in, all the blueprints from all the facilities. Great, that's good. Thanks for the, thanks for the field trips, appreciate that, seeing what other communities have done, and hopefully seeing the good and the bad, what has happened in those communities. To whatever projects they, you know, whatever they've had a wire, whether it's a town building, so. Lot to look at, but you've made our job a little bit easier, certainly, by gathering this information and doing a lot of the research, so we really appreciate that. Very difficult, you know, it's a big project, it's approaching the cost of a new high school almost by the time we get there, so it's, it's a lot, lot to consider. With the inflation rates and what's going on in the building community, so. You know, we gotta take it seriously, and we will, and we'll put in some, some hard work and effort as your council and get the information out to the public as well, soon, very soon. Anyway, anybody else wants to speak as far as from the committee, you are welcome. If not, we appreciate the report, appreciate the work again, yes, Donna, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Brendan and the committee for all their hard work and a very thorough report. I know it's tedious, but it's very informative, and, and we do appreciate what you've done, thank you.
Donna Boebe, thanks to you for your drive. I was on the advisory committee, Brendan, thank you for presenting it, the, the final report that we have. Given, you know, the time constraint that we had, and hoping that we could get you something that you could decide whether or not you're gonna move forward to any type of referendum in the fall. Just, I just caution you, you know, as we think about end of May or June, I know Kevin had a pretty detailed schedule that really said you needed to get started on bonding in June, if you wanted to move it forward in November, seems like a lot of time, but that's, that's what the schedule presents. The other thing that I just mentioned is that, you know, the two options that were looked at by the committee, the Y is an option coming in, and a town-funded community and senior center, they really are two different animals. And pluses. And pluses and minuses on both sides. One thing that I do wanna mention as chair of Parks and Rec. The Y. And John Benninge will tell you this himself. The Y cannot meet the statement of needs of the Park and Rec Commission or the Commission on Age. They don't look at that as part of their mission. And so if. That's what the town is looking for, the Y, you would really have to get into very deep negotiations and understand great detail. About what they can and won't do. And it's not that they wouldn't want to do, they just don't have that expertise. And so I just ask you, please, read the reports, read the notes. Yes, read the appendix. Those are notes, those are lessons learned that we learned from other towns, both even from the whys that were visited. And John Benninge, there were question and answers presented and he provided some answers to. A lot he couldn't because there's no specific plan at this time. But. You know, I, I just, again, I caution you, please just make sure your, your, your eyes and ears are open to both options. Look at them and understand the pros and cons before you decide which way you might, might wanna go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else? A few questions and, and first I'll start by saying normally when these committee meetings have been happening, I was sitting where. We all are sitting now, all deliberated and, and I'm just so impressed with all the work that went into it. As, as Mayor Mark said, it's no easy task to go to all forms of the city and look at various facilities, but it was truly a thorough. Investigation into, into what facilities offered in various towns and what we can feasibly implement here. So I guess, you know, in looking at the report. And I'm not sure who's maybe best equipped to answer this. I guess I'll address it to Brendan, but. Was there a consensus amongst the special committee as to which specific facility could be most feasibly implemented in Berlin?
Well, no, if we really fought out that battle, you know, we were just trying to be. As tradition as we can with the information that we were required to get, you know, from the charge. We weren't. There to fight that battle. We were just trying to get information. Like Donna said, pros and cons to both sides and we all have to look at that, weigh that as we move forward. Know my answer to your question.
So, so I, I guess I wasn't asking, you know, the merits of either, or I guess, more even more generally than that, just in terms of. In the visits to various facilities, was there any one facility? That really left out to the, you know, could, whether it was Wyndham, whether it was the Meriden YMCA, was there anyone that. Really struck the committee as something that could be.
Well, to me, at least, and I think I heard some of these comments, you know, I did go to Newtown. That was one of the newer ones. It was close. To what we were looking at, but, you know, about half the size. They didn't have a gym because it was a business next door that had a gym. And, and those. Other activities that they offered to the public, so they didn't wanna compete. Their pool wasn't as large as what we're, we're looking to do. And I don't think they had a diving well. So it was close, a nice facility. And it's relatively newer, but already you saw some details, they're gonna walk through that they were already looking to change. I think that was the place where. They're bringing showers and they were gonna renovate the showers because the showers shoot water out into the changing area. Or wasn't the best option. It was already being deteriorated. It was like a cheap line up for, they were gonna rip that out. In the past. So there was, that facility, I think. Stuck out in, in my mind. I did not go to the one that was still under construction of the window. That's a large facility, I think, it's around something newer.
Yeah. Brand spanking.
If I may, wanted to add, what I saw, I think, for me anyways, what I gathered, I think for a majority of the people that were on the committee. Is that we found that there, there's, there was no one facility you could walk into and say, this is exactly what we want here in Berlin. You know, what we need and what we want is very unique when it comes to looking at what we saw. I think that's why I was really grateful to go to the, to the, a lot of the facilities that I went to. And at the same time, read the notes from the people that went to some of the ones I didn't go to. To really kind of, it's almost like you choosing like what I could work for us, this could work for us. And that's why I think when Donna says, really read everything we did in this report, I really think, I think once you do, you really get a good feeling for. What, you know, you, you take the cons or at least the mistakes and some of the things that they didn't want, they, that other communities went through. And hopefully we can dodge some of those, those pitfalls here in Berlin, or at least get ahead of what they had to deal with. Whether they build a facility, in the case of Wyndham, they finished building it a couple of months ago. Or there's a Y facility that was built ten, fifteen years ago. It's more about just trying to figure out what's gonna work best for us. Go through the statements of need to see what exactly it is really. And then piece it together like that and really kind of determine, I think that, that's what's gonna be kind of interesting, isn't it? Really interesting. I'm looking forward to the discussion that we have about this to see really what everybody feels like is gonna work for our community. We're very unique. We're, we're, you know, certainly a lot of different needs, whether, whether it's the senior center needs or swimming community or the, the. Communities underneath, there's a lot of different things that we do in Berlin. So I think that, looking at everything, I think we'll give you that.
I guess if there is one thing that I gleaned from the meetings, it was that truly every facility was different. Every community in which the facilities were located was different. And to Mr. Thurston's point that he made early on. In the audience of citizens, you, I guess, from an investment standpoint, if we're gonna do this, it's. The best investment to do it right. And so with that comes the understanding of. Getting the ins and outs of, of what works in each town and, and what could be implemented here at a. Obviously a reasonable cost so that we're not constantly having to update it, which is even more so the burden on the town and on the taxpayers and. The point being building something that lasts, so.
Yeah, I mean, that was one of the things, to see a different variety of buildings and, you know. You look at Meriden Y, you know, programs change. One of the big new recreation ideas is pickleball. Meriden Y was built when racquetball was a big thing. They've got two giant racquetball courts that are two stairs high and they've got the space and hardly anybody uses it. So what do you do with it? You have to do a huge construction project to renovate that area. You don't see that in any of the newer facilities. No one's playing that sport anymore. So that's a whole space in a building that you really can't do anything with. So that was interesting to at least see that and then look at that in person like, wow, that really is a big room. What are you gonna do? You can't turn it into a pickleball court. It's not the right size dimension wise. So it was, it was neat to see, at least for me, a newer project versus something in the past, still around.
Okay, alright, yes, Barbara.
I have a question.
Yes.
When can we outreach to the community?
Well, that's what I mentioned that, yeah, so the public, we're gonna try and as soon as we digest a little bit of this, we'll, we'll try and as soon as we can, maybe. Be right after the Memorial Day holiday or something. I'm not sure people are around, first of all. And before summer, obviously, we want people on vacation. And I, I think we should have, I, I think we should go forward with a, a public meeting. Probably, I'm thinking McGee seems to be the best place, so yeah, easy access for everyone. And, you know, present this plan and, and, or present the information and then, then, you know, open some discussion. The public so they, they see what you guys have done and what that. Go from there, but we got, yeah, we gotta get it out to the, the public. Obviously, the plan will be out there, you know, this, or your information will be out there now. It's not planned. Information that you, you, you've all gathered on different options and what, what, what it means. So, yeah, that's, that would be the next.
Individuals, we can now, that we're done with the committee.
Well, I would, I would prefer, remember your charge was to get this information to the council. I would prefer we don't go out there and. And until we have our public meeting and, and, you know, get it out there from the source, from you, you guys in the council. And then after that. I guess we could call it open season after that, but. Before then, I'd, I'd rather we wait to get it out there as a team. Which we are, I think, right? That's the point of this and we'll get it out to, to everybody.
People are asking about it. They know we're, we have.
Yeah, and that's good.
Know what we're doing, but I feel restricted, so.
Well, you should, no, I'm just kidding. So, no, I mean. I guess, I know, I know it's tough, I get it. But I mean, that, really that was the purpose. Remember, the purpose was to gather this information, which you guys did an unbelievable job. And I, I know it's, it's not fun. I mean, some of it's a little bit of fun, because you're volunteers and you're helping the town and that's what we all do it for, but. But it's tough. It's, it was a tough job and you did a great job. So ra- rather than, because what, what I, what, what I fear is when, you know. One person decides to put this little piece out there, the next person puts that piece out there. Let's at least have a chance to get the community together. Get it all out as a group and then, you know, and, and then we can, you know, look at the different pieces of it. Whoever's gonna say what they're gonna say, they're gonna say. But I'd, I'd rather let's, let's wait for that meeting. I know we're all chomping at the bit to, to talk about it. We all are. But let's get the information out of public session first. And then we'll go from there.
And I just wanna say, Barbara, you're a great conduit for us, for your, you know, appreciate your input.
And I wanna say to the visiting committee, the committee that did all the, I did not go on the visitations, but they all did and they, I read every report. And they did a wonderful job explaining the different things and then we talked about it in our meeting. So a lot of work has gone into this. I just hope that we are able to go forward, you know, because it's gonna be a facility that's gonna benefit the town for many years. So, so you think in, after the Labor Day weekend, we will do a public outreach?
Yeah, I, I, I think you gotta go on that first. We can do. Think the holiday is, but we'll, we're gonna, what we're gonna do, Barbara, is like, what I envision is that we would, um. Yeah, we could talk to Mr. Delaney about the bonding. Yeah, we can adjust the date, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to him. We'll figure it out, but, I mean, there's a lot of information. It's a very important decision. It's a very expensive project. It's, you know, important to the town. We have options. You've presented us with options, which is good. You know, I think we gotta, we gotta digest a lot, as is the community. Right? I mean, they're the ones that have gotta know what, what, what we're looking at doing. So, you know, we'll talk to Mr. Delaney about the body. I think the last thing we all should do, and, and I, I don't, I wanna get it going, believe me. But we don't wanna rush it either. Just to rush it to make a deadline because that's how you make some mistakes, right? So, but, but we're on it. You guys got it done quickly. That, that's great. And we'll, we'll get it to the public. Let's get it to them and get this out there and. And we can have some public, you know, discussion about.
And I wanna say one more thing, you know what I'm having than I am with seniors.
Of course, we all are.
And of course, and I hope so.
Because we're, well, my name is Sir Seniors here, so yeah, appreciate, thank you. Thanks for doing that, yeah.
But the Y.
For myself.
Does not have a lot of input from the seniors. They don't have a much program. They don't have a lot of things that the seniors would require. So I just want the council to keep that in mind when they go forward and when we have our public hearing. That will, we'll be able to talk about that.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we gotta get it, we gotta get it all out there. All, all the, it's a pieces of it. It's important. So, yeah, that's, that's what I would envision, get it out there quickly. Well, you know, give us all the time to digest it through here. So it's quite a report. It's great report. It's fairly, it's a lot of time. Again, it's all appreciated from everybody, Mike and everybody here. That's great.
Then I have one very minor request regarding the public hearing.
Sure, you please do it at night. Well, yeah, we're gonna do it at night. Yeah, 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 absolutely, yeah.
And I have flashbacks to the budget hearing at the seniors.
Yeah, well, that's why, Barbara, I'm thinking if we could do it earlier, maybe we started earlier, I don't know, maybe five thirty or something at McGee. Where people could, you know, because we, we tend to do the two meetings and of course we just saw the budget meeting, nobody showed up, but. So I, I just, McGee would be the place that I'd try and get one, one meeting together if we could. I mean. If you wanna do a, a short presentation at the senior center, of course, we can do something like that. Yeah, we could do that. But that's why McGee, right, is, is, right, easier to access, right, for everyone. Well, that'd be the plan. But we'll try and do a, a smaller. You might have to go to work that day, Jeff.
Well, and just as long as it's well attended in the afternoon session by seniors, that is extremely important, obviously. I just, my big concern is. Making sure people go to it. Like you said, it's a huge decision and.
Yeah.
Wanna make sure people are educated and will agree, it's their choice.
That, you know, I, I agree a hundred percent. People will be as educated as they wanna be. This report will be out there on. Line on the town website for everyone to read and digest on their own if they, you know, as we know. Perhaps from the, the last budget vote we just had. It's very difficult to get people out to vote on anything, frankly. You know, other than the national elections are pretty good and the state elections are a little bit, you know, they're pretty good too. But it's tough on just the, you know, the budget votes, referendum votes, it's, it's frustrating. For those of us that are, you know, all of us, but, but certainly elected officials, we want to hear that, right? We wanna hear from the public and. Sometimes they just aren't paying attention, you know, which is, which is, you know, shame, but that's the way that's.
Well, first of all, they have to know about it. A lot of people like seniors, they don't go on Facebook, they don't go on all those things. And some of them, and some of them don't even, don't even have a newspaper.
I, 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 well, you know what? You're right. That's why we're working on another way to get some notices out to folks, but, but the robo-call. For this might, might be a good way to do it, because you're right, a lot of people, you know. They, they don't read the newspaper either. Um, no, not really, but we, we can, we can work on something. We're, we're working on a new system. That will actually, if people will sign up for it, we'll get, I think we're gonna do text messages, right? It's gonna be a text messaging thing to, and, and, and many issues. Hey, there's a budget vote coming. There's a meeting in the senior center. We're trying to get that put together, because a lot of towns are doing that now. But, but I know a lot of people, especially seniors, uh, don't, don't, you know, don't take text messages either, so. I don't know what, you know, sometimes I don't know what to do. We try and we'll put signs up, put some signs up before that. You know, maybe four or five signs in the strategic places. That seems to be the best way, honestly. I think the signs. You know, at the different intersections seem to, it's pretty much everybody is driving by, right? Even Dairy Queen or Porter's Pass or, you know, the whole entrances into town there, down by. Uh, you know, Central Pizza there, you know, just everyone drives by those. So we'll, we'll do that too. Because believe me, it's very frustrating, I guess, when people say afterward, I didn't know. And, you know, it, it, it's hard. Every, we get it out there in just about every venue. They still don't, no. But, so we'll, we will try our best. But I'll say anything else? We good? Alright, we'll move on from that. Thank you all. Thank you for. Coming and talking about this and there'll, there'll be a lot more discussions to come. Which, which is great, which is a good thing. Okay, so on to topic.
Then that in number five is a, is a building design and construction administration services, the festival.
From my associate. So we went out to bid for construction, uh, design, architecture, construction administration services and for, and feasibility study for personal psychology, ultimate renovation. We had two bids, two companies bid on it. We met with both companies, myself, Steve and another gentleman from another town who's. Very well versed in turf management, sat in on the interviews with us. We interviewed both, both, you know, did well in the interview, but in the end, Linden landscaping. Was not only the lowest bidder, but the only qualified bidder. We've done some work with them in the past with the town and we've had a good relationship and a good rapport. So I think it's a great positive start to the project.
Great, thank you. Project that we need, right?
Yes.
Definitely need more field. More repair of our field, so that's great. Talking about this for a while since it's good, get going. Questions for, for Jen, for Steve? A question, take a motion.
We moved to award RFP twenty twenty-two, this thirty, authorized the town manager to enter into a contract with Linden Landscapes Architects LLC on the amount to exceed thirty-four thousand. And five hundred dollars for reconstruction of Crystal Soccer Field.
Great, thank you. Second, any other questions or comments? Are there none? All of us in favor?
Hi.
So.
Then item number six is a five-year board multi-functional copyer in a lease agreement.
Good evening. Um, in two thousand seventeen, the town and Board of Ed finance departments worked together to consolidate our multifunctional copier, printer, scanner devices to try to make our offering and our bids more compelling. It's been almost five years and we are now back up to renew that agreement. We went out to bid and we had twelve responses, which was very encouraging. And after reviewing all of those bids, we are asking for approval to award contract to Office Works, who is our incumbent. Um, the contract includes all labor and materials with machine with the exception of paper. So for five years, the town and Board of Ed have been able to operate these machines without having to purchase toners, staples, uh, pay for labor if there's any repairs. Um, it also is, will allow for continuity of IT. We've tried integrating these machines so that individuals can print from their desk, but actually get it on any device that's on the network. And in addition to that, um, the bids will include the opportunity to integrate with the card system that we have to enter in and out of our various buildings around town, rather than having to punch in a code, which enhances security so that items are not printed and left on the printer, especially if there's anything confidential, student-related, health-related, et cetera. Um, individuals will be able to walk up to the machine, swipe their card, and then the items will print. It's been proven to reduce waste as well as enhance security. Um, so Office Works was the low bidder and we're asking for approval to sign another five-year agreement with them.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, questions for Kevin? None. Go ahead and take a motion.
Move software to become manager, be signed a five-year multi-year, copier, printer, scanner lease agreement, low bidder, Office Works. Devices of various town and board of education locations for annual cost of fifty thousand, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars plus usage charges.
Second comment, George? Uh, any other, any comments or questions? Of the vote? If not, all of us in favor?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right. So agenda item number seven, this is a discussion item. It's a proposed defined benefits plan with police officers. And the background, periodically we have reported to you as a more group, uh, to representatives from the police commission, to Board of Finance, Mayor, myself, Chief, Mayor's Director, and also, uh, to, from the police unit. We have been looking at various options for over a year. Uh, we looked at state plan, Seamer's option, we reported on that to the council. We had discussions about various contribution increases in time. And then we finally looked at, uh, here to define, um, benefit option. What I would like to do now is before getting into the numbers and costs, have the chief talk to you about why, why we are doing this, why you think it's necessary to be, um, the conversation about defined benefit plan, switching from my contribution. The ones, uh, the chief talks about that, I'll have Kevin go over the summary and be an opportunity to ask questions and back, think about it and make a meaningful question.
Yeah, and, and this is a benefit of the council. So, you know, we've been talking about it a year now, maybe. We've been having discussions and we've got to this point, which is, which is a good point to be at. We still haven't set a final agreement yet, but we wanted to make sure the council gets brought up to date. So we still have a few more meetings to go to and and to get the final, the final plan, but we're, you know, conceptually there, just, just the details, all the detail. But we're, we're very close and it's, you know, if I wanted to get you guys caught up, so take it away, chief.
Evening, everybody. I believe in your packet, you might have gotten the, uh, two sheets of paper with a couple paragraphs that I wrote as to why, um, law enforcement agencies all over the state actually are starting to move back and have been for a couple of years now, moving back to defined benefits versus defined contributions. Probably the biggest, um, issue for us right now in trying to attract and hire, uh, younger officers in the Berlin Police Department is that we use, um, Police App, which is a, a system where they can apply and pick which departments they want to look at their, their applications and they take a test and all. And then we get to look at the list to choose who to bring in and give an oral exam to and, uh, then do interviews based off of how they score on our oral exams. And when we make the calls to the best candidates, they often ask us the first question. There are usually two questions. The first question is, um, how long do I have to work there and what's the benefits package? And this is a generational change from the past twenty years. I've been in law enforcement forty years. And, uh, as the mayor knows, having been in law enforcement itself, we went from defined benefits to defined contributions in, in managing agencies and all because there was issues with defined benefits plans in the past not being properly funded and, and a bunch of other issues. And then now what's happened is people, young people today, older ones too, but mostly the young ones, they're more worried about the benefits because our benefits have eroded in, uh, public service over the past twenty years or so. And what we've done is we pay more, uh, money to attract employees, but they don't stick around. So what happens is they'll come here to our, our agency. They'll do two years, get the academy, which we pay for. The academy's not free anymore. And once they're capable, they'll shop around to get the best deal possible, looking at that twenty to twenty-five year future. And, um, so what's happened is, is when we look at our list off of Police App and, and our potential of hiring candidates and we start saying, okay, well, we want the ones that score the best, to have the clean backgrounds that are going to be very, um, invested in the community. When we talk to them, they sound great until I ask, okay, is there a pension plan? And when we say, well, we don't have a pension plan, we have defined contribution plan. It, it, it's a 401K, 401A, whatever. And there's, there's some advantages to that. If you're that kind of person, it's good investing and you're of your own money. To be blunt, most police officers, when they're in their early twenties, are not thinking about investments and thinking about twenty years out. They'd rather somebody else do that for them. Put the carrot on the stick at the end of that period of time that they got to serve, and that's how we retain people. So there's a retention component too. Of course, with most defined benefits plans in the design of defined benefits, you gotta have so many years to be vested. And right now, we don't have that with defined contributions. What we found was by going to defined contributions, the employees became very portable because your defined contribution is portable. It, it's not something that you have to do for twenty-five years. You could do it for five years. You could do it for three years. You could pick up, still retain it, go to another agency. So I've been here six months and one of the biggest problems I see here in Berlin, although we're a small department, is we have to plan for the future. We have a large group of people in the department that are older, that came from other agencies and they're going to be leaving in a couple of years. And then we have like a gap of, um, personnel that are in the department. Then we're going to have some very young officers. So we need to attract younger officers for a bunch of reasons. First of all, the job is really a younger person's job. When you start hitting sixty, sixty-five years old, you're prone to injuries and other parts of things that happen with your daily routine change. So we need to attract those young officers, but it's going to be hard for us to attract young officers. And we're already seeing that now. When the surrounding towns around us have these defined benefits plans. So, um, a couple of places in Connecticut had gone to defined contributions and have now switched back to defined benefits to attract the same people that we're attracting. The other issue that we have with this is that young people are not coming into the field of law enforcement. Um, not in Connecticut, not in the whole country. Yeah, just look at the media. Law enforcement doesn't look like it's been doing too good for the past couple of years. Uh, you know, we're eight hundred thousand officers strong in this country, give or take a little. And everybody's bailing out. You see it with the state and state employees. And we have a large population segment that's just waiting for a better deal and they're always waiting for a better deal. So, you know, when I was twenty-two, twenty-three years old, gallant Marine Corps, I went and said, oh, I'm going to be a police officer for a while. Nobody said to me, hey, let's sit down and talk about your pen, benefits package, because you didn't think about it. Today, young people are more astute, especially because they have college, they're coming out of the schools and besides hourly wages, they're looking at what's going to be in it for the long haul. So when we don't have the defined benefits and we can sit there and talk to them, so we're blowing their face about defined contribution. And some of those officers do very well with their investments, but the majority of them just don't understand. They're not into the markets and, and it's, it's too much work for them. So what's happening is we're losing the best and brightest candidates to the other agencies around us that have gone back to defined benefits and that's the pension plans. So that's why the union, I believe, and I'm not going to speak for the union because I know John Flynn's in the room there, but the union has been going back and forth with the town on this prior to my coming here and, um, I think, you know, it's something that you're going to have to think about how you want to proceed in the future. I definitely support the defined benefits over to defined contributions, even though personally I would, uh, say that, you know, with some of the defined benefits plans, there's a lot of, uh, requirement on making sure that there's a stewardship over it. I did spend thirteen years on the pension board in the city of Danbury before I came here. Uh, when I was young and aggressive and worried about my future and, um, you know, I learned a lot about pensions and there's a lot to pensions. What we've been discussing sounds like a pretty fair deal to me and, um, so I'm in support of it. I'll take questions.
Thanks, chief. Questions, machine?
Thank you. So, um, you should have a paper like this, you know, material that, um, and put together summarizes various options. And there was also a draft of agreement, um, that's just draft, you know, the staff has not reviewed it completely and the town's Labor Council has not reviewed. So, but don't pay too much attention to that because given what we're just talking about, the assumptions and the in the summary at the high level, then we can take any questions after that. What do you, Kevin?
All right. Um, before I dive into all of the numbers, I, I want to step back, um, for just one second. I will say, and I said this when we were in the various meetings, DB plans are very good plans for both employers and employees as long as they're funded. The town has been dealing with the consequences of violating what actuaries would call the intergenerational equity component, which essentially means you're going to offer this benefit to a police officer who's providing you public safety service today to receive a benefit twenty, twenty-five, thirty years from now. You have two options. One is to say, we'll pay for that later. The other is you actually fund it each year. And two things you gain from that. One, you gain actual assets in the plan, which is huge, but you're also gaining time value of money. You gain the ability for the money you deposited to actually grow so that when that officer retires and you begin to pay out, the assets are there. Over the last four or five years, um, you've paid out twelve lump sum payouts. You've paid out millions of dollars that realistically should have been funded over a decade and a half, two decades or longer. So it's important, um, going into this that everybody understands it is critical for both the value of money and actual assets in the plan that, um, the plan is funded, whatever the mechanisms are selected. And when it comes to budgeting, understand the defined contribution plan, one of its advantages from an employer standpoint is predictability. You know what someone's wages are. If it's a twelve percent employer match, you can, the math is very simple. You know exactly what you're going to put into the budget. With the defined benefit plan, you're committing to a benefit, not to what you contribute. So you may have to contribute four percent or five percent one year because the market did really well, far exceeding your assumptions. In another year, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that may require fifteen percent, twenty percent contribution. Um, I could tell you, Seamer's a couple of years ago, it was a twenty-four percent increase year over year in the contribution. So you you have to be willing to stick with the DB plan and the funding over the long haul. The second thing to consider, and we've talked a little bit about this, is while we're talking about the DB plan, um, from a budget standpoint and from a, uh, impact standpoint, as you'll see on the chart that you have in front of you. This is one of the components. Over the next few years, we're going to be dealing with a lot of different budget matters. Inflation and wages and questions around that. Health insurance trends continue. Uh, we continue to see pressure on cybersecurity. You, you continue to deal with capital matters. You've talked earlier tonight about a substantial potential asset, but also cost with the community senior center. So it is one of many elements and hopefully, um, you know, we keep it in mind in the broader picture as well. The chart you're looking at, to dive in a little bit, there's a few key inputs when you think about the plan. First is going to be, what's the payout cap? So the plan is designed to pay out two percent per year times years of service, times the highest three years average earnings. That's how an annual calculation would be determined for an officer who's retiring. Typically in a plan, there is a cap, a number of years, fifty to seventy-five percent is the cap. So if somebody were to work twenty-five years at two percent, that's fifty percent. If they were to work thirty years, but you had a fifty percent cap, they're capped at fifty percent. However, the wages can continue to grow so that they would get some benefit of continuing to work, assuming you had wage increases. The numbers you're looking at on the chart assume a twenty-five year or fifty percent cap. The union is requesting sixty percent cap. So that is one factor that I think we have to, we have to reconcile and determine. If you increase the cap, as you can imagine, the higher the cap, the more the liability, which then requires additional funding as you go through an officer's career. Uh, second question is, do you have a, a cost of living adjustment? Is there a cost of living adjustment built into the plan to essentially represents an increase every single year for the beneficiaries after they retire? There's two common methods of doing that. One is tying it to an index, treasury bill rates or something like that. Over the last several years, tying it to a treasury bill rate, you would have very little of a cost of living adjustment. However, if you look forward to where we are now, about eight and a half percent, I think they just declared. So that would be a huge increase. And anybody who collects social security this year is on the beneficiary, is a beneficiary of, of that component. So the other option is to establish a set cost of living adjustment rate. This plan proposes where you see the post-retirement COLA line. Some of them have a COLA assumption. We also ran scenarios without a COLA assumption built in. The union has requested a, a two percent static, which allows the town to make increases even during periods of low inflation, but to avoid having to pay extraordinary increases during periods of extraordinary inflation. Third is what's the employee contribution? This is the classic cautionary. It's the same thing with health insurance and other things. You have a cost element. How much of that are you going to ask the employee, the officer, to contribute today in the DC plan? Um, officers contribute six percent, the town matches twelve percent. So as you look across the top with the EE contribution line, you can see we looked at six percent, but we also looked at eight percent. You can see we looked at six percent, but we also looked at eight percent. And the eight percent was driven by an attempt to share that cost burden building up over time. Of the cost of living adjustment. Certainly the liability went up. Some of that could be shared by the officers with a higher contribution rate. Um, another component is many plans have a disability component. Someone could retire if they become disabled. We have a plan that has been in place for a few years now, a Lloyd's of London plan that pays out a monthly amount. For officers who are injured on the job. And um, we would look at that plan continuing. This does, this assumes that the disability element. That is common in some plans, but does not exist in all plans, would not be included in this plan. And then finally, you have two interesting components here that are a little bit unique compared to, say, joining a diff, a new plan. There are officers, remember this, uh, the current DB plan was sunset in two thousand. So you have officers. Who are coming up on twenty-two years under the DC scenario. And then you have all the way up to officers that have been here less than a year. So there's a buy-in component. And if you look at the buy-in amount, you'll see that there are amounts that the actuaries determine would be necessary. That would fully fund the liability of all of the officers buying all of their previous time. Um, to join in. And then you also see there are some li, uh, columns where it's zero. There is the option, if, if the town and the union came to the agreement to say, we're gonna start this plan from today. And there will be no buy-in option and everybody will start to build time from this point forward. Um, those are really the key contributing factors to what would the normal cost be? A normal cost is the annual budgetary cost that the town uh would be expected to contribute. Through the general fund budget. Um, it is assuming the employee contribution, so it, it's trying to fund the future liability. After taking into account employee contributions. It does not include, what we're proposing now is to not include the lump sum option, which existed in the closed DB plan. That in addition to having a serious liability, creates a tremendous cash crunch. As you've all experienced over the last few years with the payouts we've seen. Um, and then finally, the last thing I'll comment is the eligible compensation would be just base wages. Probably the classic example of this has been the debate that's been ongoing with the state for a number of years. As to whether overtime should be included or not. Uh, you have individuals who in the last three years of their working time can rack up considerable overtime. Causing their average three-year wages to be substantially higher than it might have been over their entire career. Therefore inflating the ultimate payout and liability. Um, so we're looking to avoid that. And the existing closed defined benefit plan also did not include overtime and other components. Um, so with that, kind of walking across the columns. The first column really looked at continuing the existing contributions for employees, six percent. Fully funding the buy-in amount, offering a two percent fixed COLA. So there would be a two percent cost of living adjustment every single year. Um, fifty percent cap on the payout. The town's normal cost or annual budgeted cost would be four hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars. That compares to the FY twenty-three budget, so the budget that was just adopted. For just the thirty-five officers included in this plan, in that budget is three hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred forty-nine dollars. So. The cost of offering this plan would increase the expected contribution by just over sixty-two thousand dollars. That would be an assumed increase to the budget, not just this year, but. Um, you can assume something similar to that. Obviously, it would vary based on market performance. Um, and the demographics of future officers, but you can assume an increase of about sixty-two thousand dollars a year. If we go to one A, you have all of the same characteristics. Except the contribution from the employee would be increased from six percent to eight percent. That eight percent is designed to, to a large extent, offset the projected cost of the COLA. Uh, in that case, when the actuaries come out with this, it would actually be about a six thousand dollar increase to the budgeted amount. For intensive purposes, in the ninety-six million dollar budget that was just adopted, six thousand dollars is flat. Um, then if you went to the next column, it looks at keeping the six percent contribution. Not allowing the buy-in amount, but offering a COLA. That ends up being the most expensive option. It would cause the budget, it would require a budget increase of over a hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. The reason for that is because instead of infusing five million dollars of assets. Right at the start of the plan and giving those assets time to grow. Um, there are no assets, so we're starting from zero. Um, similarly, if we were to look at the same assumptions except eight percent contribution. Then that hundred eighty-two thousand dollar increase drops to a hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred. Um, the next column. Takes a look at contributing six percent. And looks at no COLA, which then translates to a smaller buy-in amount. The officers would just have to buy in less because we're not offering the COLA, which of course drove up their liability. So their contribution would drop to just under four million dollars. And that would actually result in a budget savings of almost sixty-two thousand dollars. And then the last scenario we, we looked at was continue the existing six percent contributions, no buy-in option, no COLA. Very, very vanilla plan, essentially move from DC to DB with everything the same, starting today. And that would increase the budget amount by about thirty-four thousand dollars. If you were to look somewhere in between. Um, you can, you can kind of gauge, we tried to almost put these as markers so you could evaluate, for example. We can't make someone decide to buy in. So these thirty-five officers would have the option to buy in. Who would not necessarily all buy in or all buy in all of their years. Um, if, if you went from everybody buying, so that's the five million dollars. Heading down towards the zero buy-in would tell you how much the budget increase would be. So if the, if everybody bought in at five million from exhibit one, you can see it would increase your budget about sixty-two thousand. If half of the eligible officers bought in, you can assume that that number's going to shift from the sixty-two. And probably be somewhere around roughly halfway towards the one eighty-two. So, you know, you'd add about sixty thousand to it, or you'd have about a hundred thousand dollar increase to your budget. If only half contributed. And unfortunately, until the plan is developed and until the option comes up for officers to decide. There's no way to definitively gauge how many people will actually buy in. Um, the only other piece I would comment on is if we had this conversation and folks decided to buy in six months ago. Their answer may be very different than what it is today because the market. The bond market in addition to the stock market are dramatically different today than they were six or eight months ago. Um, so it, it will be very difficult to gauge what individuals will do and that's going to be a very individual decision. Hopefully that was helpful. I tried to avoid getting too into the numbers, but I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Kevin. And, and I, I apologize to my fellow counselors. We have been looking at this for about a year or so. We squeezed it into about fifteen minutes, so it'll take, it'll take a little while to digest it, but uh, so. We have some, we have some options here. We're, you know, almost there, I think with um. Union and uh, as uh, Kevin said, the unusual saying that. Those of us on the council for the last five, six years have had to deal with is the, the non-funding of the defined, of the old defined benefit plan. Which had a unbelievable, not heard of anywhere I've ever been, uh. Choice for the employee when, when they were grandfathered in. And we switched to the defined contribution plan of a, of a choice of a lump sum buyout. Which really were even more that it wasn't funded, you know, where. And, and good for those officers that were there. I mean, lucky them. Uh, it was their lucky day and it's okay. You know, they served the town well, but that, that's a very. Big financial burden that we faced with, with no contributions for years. And then they were able to choose a lump sum. If they chose an annuity payment, you know, it could have made it a little bit easier, but that's, you know, going away and. I, again, Burlington's famous for that, uh, I guess, that, that particular plan and. In the seventies, we were famous for an X-rated outdoor movie theater, which I still can't figure out how that got through things, but anyway, sorry. That's just traveling around the country. I never saw that anywhere, anywhere in the world, actually. So Burlington's got some famous things. That it was running the turnpike. Yes, it's running the turnpike. Well, you know, that's, that's nasty, Russell. So anyway, but sorry, I had to lighten up a little bit, too many numbers. Kevin, I know you like it, but. Anyway, so uh, much better plan here, great for the officers. We need it, uh, when we have, you know, we have young officers that are. As the chief said it best and Kevin as well, they're um. You know, more sophisticated now looking at that. And again, when all counts around its offer, we're certainly at a disadvantage. Uh, in, in keeping officers and recruiting, which is very, very difficult for that. So that's where we're at. Uh, so just really for you guys to digest, if you have questions. Go ahead or think about it. We can have some questions and answers in the, the next meeting, because we're still talking about it. We're almost there, so we're getting close, but. Wanted to make sure you guys are quite up to where, where we're at.
Good. I guess more of a comment than a question, but. Um, in terms of the estimated impact to taxpayers, I guess I'm a little surprised that. Um, it, it doesn't seem like it's, looking at the various options, it doesn't seem like it's. That much more expensive to find the defined benefit plan versus the current plan that we have. So, you know, that's the expense that we take on for certainty in terms of increasing retention in our police department. Um, it seems very encouraging.
Yeah, that's, that's a good comment and that, of course, assumes that we do fund it every year. Uh, you know, we, that whatever figure here, you know, whatever plan we, we take, you, you're right, Jack, that as long as we put that money in. Uh, we go along with the plan as, as organized, yeah, it, it won't be uh, a large burden to the taxpayers. That is correct. Anything else? Alright, so we'll digest this and uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll bring it back. Obviously, it, it will require council approval. So when we get to the actual final document, we'll bring that forward. Alright, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Chief.
Alright. It's the uh, mission charter. I give that to you.
Oh, great, thank you. Uh, I think we've talked about this, we had one, what, three, four years ago? Yeah, so we changed, we kind of changed the thing, changed, you go from mayor and there's a few other. Things we, 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 I think that last charter review commission probably jumped into perhaps too many things. Um, we'd like to maybe limit that a little bit this time, but you know, there's a few items that we'd like to look at, that the charter review commission to look at. I mean, there's some, one, one we heard about from, from Doug Solak tonight to, to raise the uh, you know, the ten thousand. Uh, that they would bring to the council, the twenty-five thousand, you know, that's something that we tried last time, it just was in a question with several other things, so it didn't, it didn't get passed. I don't think anybody objected to it, but it's just, we've had, I think, five questions and the first four were, you know, big issues with changes. Form of town government or anything like that. Um, the other thing, I, I think we're, you know, we've, we've been dealing with, um, unless I take this the wrong way. Uh, with the VNA, it's proven a challenge to organize it differently, do a little bit better jobs, certainly uh, funding it. And we're a little bit hamstrung with the uh, with it, the way it's worded in the charter. So, you know, with our. Corporation council, sure it will help us through this, uh, and the, the committee through this. Uh, how, how to make it so it's a little bit easier to perhaps make some changes. Um, and uh, you know, look at the VNA and do the best we can with it for the folks in town. We're not saying we're eliminating anything. We just wanna have some more options and some more authority to, to make some changes that would, would uh, make the funding of it easier. And of course, keep the best care possible to our residents, but without some language changes, we can't do that. So that, that's one issue. And, you know, I'm sure there'll be some other things that the, the committee, you know, can, can talk about and, and come up with and. With, with council input, obviously, comes back to us before it goes to ultimately referendum in November, which is what we're trying to get to and. It is a fairly short timeframe. Um, you know, I talked to Peter, I know we mentioned it uh, a couple of weeks ago at our meeting. And uh, I talked to him this morning and said, you know, I think honestly both sides, I don't even think, you know, speaking to. My caucus and, and, and people in our TC and that, I mean, we, everybody was waffling. We don't want to open a charter again, every, it was scappally. But I, I think we need, I think we came to the conclusion that there are, there are some specific things we'd like to, to maybe fix and, and. And talking to Jeff too, we, we talked about just. Changes on some language, different things in the charter. I don't think anything, you know, I think that controversial with that, but there's things that are not clearly stated in the, in the, in the charter. So we can work on that too as part of this, so. Now that's where we're at, so, and you, you know, you're right, because. Okay, alright, yeah. And we've got four, so yeah, it's, it's, it's good. So what, what, what's, what's, so we're, we're.
You just can have simply, um, one political party can just have a simple majority. So the fourth re-words.
Okay, good.
Are, are all yours Republican?
Yeah.
Are all yours Dem?
Yes, yes. Okay, so, alright, so we're good. So what, what, what are we doing? Start naming people or what are we doing?
Well, the first thing is what my suggestion is, is to fund it.
Yes, that's always a good thing. Yes, this is the top, the top item there. So to, to be able to fund the uh. The review commission, we'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, Mr. May, I moved to approve a transfer of two thousand seven hundred dollars from the store-related overtime. Two thousand dollars into the commission secretaries, forty-seven dollars into the workers' compensation.
Second on that?
Okay.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions?
So, so just, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, there were, so just. From the outset, you had mentioned that there was some uncertainty on your caucus about. Setting parameters for the charter revision. I know that.
I don't think setting parameters, I think, I think we, we all need to recognize that once we open the charter, everything is fair game.
Sure.
And that, and that's up to, you know, the commission to deal with, you know, any member of the commission can bring up. Topics for discussion to, you know, possibly that will follow through to the referendum. That, that's why, I mean, the last time, um, I, I think they, they tackled quite a bit. And I think, you know, a lot of people say, oh, plus it's a lot of work in a short part of time and actually even to find. Seven people that we have apparently found, that's wonderful in itself. They've got a tight schedule, it's gotta be done to the council by beginning of September, I think, right? The latest through the council and done, so we can have a number of referents, but. So, yeah, and, anything's free game. I mean, we're kind of thinking about some things we know we want to fix, but if other members have other things, it's, it's certainly uh. You know, it's open for discussion and possible referendum vote, depending upon how the vote goes, I guess, and what the council thinks too.
No, I just say, yeah, I mean, I know we had an idea of the particular things that we wanted to change and it seems like. Revision would just tackle completely minor issues. Um, I just know that, you know. I guess my only hesitation is, is just that. I mean, it's, it's the concern of. And once you open the charter, everything's open for discussion and consideration and if timing is the issue. Um, I worry that we get a little carried away, like what happened in twenty sixteen and, and it would distract from. The issues that we all agree on.
Yeah, and recognize too that, I, I think, well, you know, think of it this way too, if, if we can't get it done in time, then we can't. I, I mean, there's nothing, oh, it's only gun to our head to get it done if we don't, you know, if we can, we can. Uh, you know, but we will try to do the best we can, I think, and it's not. I mean, I, I don't think anything is the end of the world here. You know, but we will try to do the best we can, I think, and it's not, I mean, I I don't think anything is the end of the world here. Uh, you know, there's things we could make better, hopefully in the charter and uh. But, yeah, so. The more we weigh, the more, you know, things will be changed.
Yeah, I think we're gonna do, we need to, you know, get dryer feet.
Do the best we can, uh so, you know, hopefully we have good candidates that were, oh, who should we do? Commission and again, it's got to come back to the council. Before it gets to the referendum, right? Yes, so, right, so do we, do we, where, do we take our vote?
It's on the funding.
Which doesn't mean we have to spend it. Uh alright, so we have our funding, uh we'll go ahead and uh vote on that. All those in favor? Thank you, Don. Uh so. Okay, so now we are to the point of appointing members and uh, okay, what's the uh? Best way to.
I I just want to make sure that you understand that and and Attorney DeNofield can weigh in on this. Is that when you open up the charter is, everything's free game. If not, also, it's not, um and I don't have the dates in the attorney's, you know, may, but you can't just continue it forever. There is a deadline that you have to meet on how long you can keep the charter revision going, right? And then also that um. Uh there's a lot of power to the commission, right? So if you don't like it. You may not have final say per se. Right?
No, that's right. I mean, you, you can make recommendations, and really, the recommendations ought to come at the time that you create the mission. You can make recommendations, but. When the, when the uh charter revision commission gives you their draft report. If you have items that you don't accept, you have a joint meeting. And you let the charter revision commission know which proposed revisions you have a problem with. However, they're under no obligation to accept your proposed edits. So ultimately, what gets voted upon is what the commission determines, not what the appointing authority, this council. Determines, which is an unusual scenario, because every other board and commission that you appoint, you have. Someone have jurisdiction over because you're the appointing authority. This one, once you appoint it, regardless of which direction you point them. Where where they end up and what ends up being on the ballot. Uh is up to them, and as Kate indicated, there's sixteen months. From the date that you appoint them for them to complete their process and. During that period, they have to have at least two public hearings on the proposed revisions. After they send you a draft report and you confer with them on anything you're not happy with.
The only saving grace, let's say, perhaps, if 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 things go awry and things get. It is going to be people of the town, so, you know, I mean, ultimately, at the end, whatever whatever goes to the referendum is the. People will have their say and uh, you know, that will be the end, and that's, I guess, how it should be. So, yeah, that is true. Alright, are we anywhere comfortable or less comfortable now?
Frank can say most.
Yeah, well, and that's why I I think we all take it with some hesitancy, believe me, I, you know, we we all do. It's it's a big step. It's changing our constitution, basically, right? So it's, you know, it's a little, it's a little scary. Yes, it is, I mean, you know.
So the next motion would be to move to form the charter revision commission and appoint the following members.
Okay, so let's let's uh, level motion to go, well, go ahead and make a motion to uh. Form the charter revision.
Sure, they moved to form a charter revision commission, appoint the following members. I have four, so, yeah, you might need to read the four. Okay, I have Nina, Dina Minikus. Sal Ward Nero, George Millard, June Daly. Uh we'd like to appoint Joe Ursimons, Julie Erickson, and Jerry Perrin. Be a very interesting group.
But all seem to have some great experience too.
Alright, and then just to note with that is both Jerry and Sal are um public or or um. They hold hold on office in town. So that would be two members out of the seven, so that's okay.
Yes.
Right, so I just wanted to point that out so that. Oh, George is done. So we're at three that are um, we can't do it.
I thought it was from each part.
The commission must have much, much have not more than one third of whom may hold public office in town. It's Sal, George, and uh. Nina was on um. It's a public office, right?
I thought it was elected. What's the definition of public office? You know what that definition is? Where would that definition be, I guess, because I I would.
In Connecticut general statute seven dash one ninety is the statutory provision that. Directs the legislative body as to the uh permitted composition of a charter revision commission. And that says, uh, point of commission consisting of not fewer than five to more than fifteen electors, not more than one third of whom may hold any other public office in the municipality. Uh, you know, public office as used in that statute is not a defined term. But certainly, anybody who is uh elected or appointed. To a town border commission holds public office for purposes of the code of ethics.
Sorry, Jeff, uh we're not town committee members.
Alright, well, we'll have to go back to drawing board, that's, can't do that kind of. I can't pull, I can't pull names out of my hat right now, so, because I don't know.
It's probably best we don't, I guess, because we want to make sure that the committee works all together and. We get very few components, so, so we're gonna have to wait till the.
Yes, how does that, how does that do for our time?
So my stomach is getting naughty. So the 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 other spot might be if you want to have a special meeting.
Alright, we'll we'll figure that out.
Okay, I mean, and it can be, the special meeting can be done by Zoom.
Yeah.
Um the the idea of Zoom is continued until September. And September.
The bill, I don't think it's been signed by the governor yet, but remove the so April thirtieth sunset. For hybrid meetings. It removed it.
Okay.
There's no need to have a place that the public can come in.
You do, if it's a hybrid meeting, so we will have to have like a screen and set up in town hall. You can do that. Uh you can be somewhere else, but there needs to be a rule somewhere that the public give.
Yeah.
Hear what you have to say and comment.
Or you can just give us one of your spots.
Now, that's funny, that is, that's right. Good try, it's a good, good shot. It's gonna take more than the.
Maybe you have a couple more, you know, you might change your mind.
This, big, never mind, but yeah, yeah, no, I think a lot more than that, but it's alright. Alright, so we will, we will uh hold that in abeyance till we uh, we've got the money now, see, we've got the money. We'll we'll figure out uh what the uh other couple people are. Just, well, yeah, I I it's threw me because I kind of checked into this. That 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 seems like that's not the interpretation I got somewhere, but that's okay. Alright, so we'll go ahead and uh maybe we could do a special meeting, I'm thinking, next week, perhaps? Is that is that more helpful?
Yeah.
Alright, so let's. Yeah.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of party conventions. Or or Republican conventions on the same, they must be in the same.
There's some next week, right? Uh, yeah, actually, yeah, you know what? You're right, there are some. I think we have one this week, congressional, but there's another one next week. Yeah, there's a bunch.
So how about if most of the conventions are, they are seven?
Yes.
Okay, so if you have, we even set it up.
Somewhere at six thirty, but whatever.
Okay, do it for six o'clock. And just have it where, you know, you can, it's not gonna be a long meeting.
No, because what are what are the questions left? Just to appoint them.
Is it to appoint them?
Yeah.
Is it to appoint the members? And then to.
The days, the days change a little, or no? You don't want to change it, right?
I can work with, if you want to have a special meeting. Been shown, yeah. You can move it out. I can work with Jeff as far as how how far out.
Well, I I mean, we'll maybe, we'll probably do an eight to probably, right? Because now we're sort of missing a week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Attorney DeNofield and I can talk tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, we'll figure that out.
And we can do it on Thursday. We have tomorrow.
Thursday. I got two, two things. I got one nominating convention. Uh town event.
Okay.
That's that, order is six. Let's, uh. Well, that's another thing, yeah, finding volunteers is not easy. Uh because it's a lot, it's a big time commitment, so that is part of the issue, but alright, we'll we'll have to, next week, let's, what we'll do is um. Hopefully by the end of the week. Maybe we'll put a couple of dates out there. But when do you think you're gonna, you guys start, like, or started? Next Thursday?
Next Thursday or this Thursday? Next, there ones, um, the hot seats are Wednesday, multiple pounds. The Senate is, state senate is Tuesday, Monday is congressional, and the state is Friday and Saturday.
Monday, state senate?
Monday is congressional.
Monday is congressional.
Tuesday is state senate, and Wednesday is state house.
I'm I'm not at the whole of the Senator, so I couldn't. They should be.
But I think there's a, I think there's a. Next, next Thursday, yeah. That's what I was thinking. Yeah, they seem to be over.
So Thursday?
That look good, Thursday, next Thursday. They do seem to be over by now, right? Some dates I'm looking at here, seventeenth, eighteenth. Yes, and nineteenth is Thursday, right? Want to shoot for Thursday? Next week.
Thursday, we time that six?
Yeah, let's do six. Yeah, because it shouldn't take very long. Right? Ah, well. Alright, so. Yeah, yeah, you know, it's some of them. Next weekend, so next, the twelfth, yeah, that should be good. Alright, seven, six? Could be quick. That good, Don? Are you good for the?
I just wanna, I I have multiple things going on here. Did you save this at six o'clock on the nineteenth? Is that the day?
Well, I'm sorry, I I.
The twelfth, okay, that should be fine, six o'clock, you said? Okay, I've got it written down. I don't think I have a conflict, but I need to just double check, and I have my calendar in the other room. Okay, I've just wrote it down, thank you.
Alright, thanks. Um, okay, so let's, let's do for that. Assuming. Alright, so.
Alright, so on the agenda would be to form the um charter revision. Appoint the members, and then it would also be to come up with a draft report. Alright, and then the third one would be, yeah, your, what your recommendations are.
Yeah.
And you you mentioned that tonight, so I think you're good, and you may have others by then, but yeah, alright.
Um, okay, so that's what we're. So.
Yeah, the draft report has to be written.
Probably from the commission.
From the commission. Yeah, so that will be in June sometime or as far out as you can push it.
But in terms of what the council. Is the, this global. I give a couple of.
Yeah. Sure. No, that's the stuff we want, except for. Okay. That's okay, alright. Oh, God, alright, alright, so we're, we're, sorry, we're done with uh. Remember we had Tom managing report, I know that'll be brief and and right to the point, I know.
Brief, I have very good news, though.
Go ahead.
So, it's sort of addressed some of the concerns and questions we had today about. Your frustrations, my frustrations, all of these things about getting people to, getting messages out to people.
Yes.
Yes, yes, so we, I think I mentioned to you, we spoke with with a few uh. Enders who provide these applications and probably have it as a, so. Or gov, e-gov, no gov, bad gov, good gov, and those ones who feel like, no lawyers, right? It's a bit like attorneys or something like that. Yeah, it's unbelievable. So anyway, we sign a contract with a group called Civic Ready. So um, now they have over seven thousand users in multiple locations around the country. But the whole idea is, you will have a mechanism um ready by, I'm trying to get it done by July first implementation. So that, once you sign up, it's just similar to Everbridge, but Everbridge mostly uses it for emergency notifications. But we will create separate categories. So people can sign up for. I'm making this up, government, so we could, if people sign up. Inform them automatically on when there are boards and commission meetings, elections, anything related to government. And then another one that I get from people complaining, why didn't you know that you had vacancies on this board or commission? I don't go on your website all the time. Okay, now sign up, and if there's a vacancy, it's gonna pop and send you an notice, right? Uh town events or just general town news. A good example, when we had COVID test distribution, mass distribution. Anything like that, we can get it out. Other category, in the public works, roads, bridges, you know, road construction going on, bridge closed. Then I'm ending box and record. So you could think of that, I'm thinking about six different categories. Um, after that, and also, not not to complicate things, and they also have automatic. Uh, whether, uh, then you can sign up for, so if you, within, within weather, there's a twenty to warning, you want to get notified. Uh, heavy winds, uh, rain, uh, snowstorm, you name it, right? So, we, we, we have, there's a team that I'm putting together, we work on that. Sal, uh, Kate, obviously because of, I'll, have you be the point, because he don't know this yet. It would be the point person for what's and all that. Uh, Mike Earn for Public Works, I'll get Steve Wagner, involve emergency. Notifications and I'll have Jen for the parks, next community, a senior center type of event. Um, I have. When it's done, it'll be pretty cool. People have to sign up though, uh, but they can also. Decide if they didn't want to continue, they cannot. Uh, what I'm also trying to do is to make things easy. Download, people have already signed up for Everbridge. And, uh, feed them into, uh, Civic Ready. So that, and we can send a notification, I said, you know, we will do a massive marketing campaign. This multi-media and this application also. Um, it integrated social media, so people can get it on, you know, Facebook or Twitter or whatever other mechanism you may have. And this also has these not very nice features such as, you know, multilingual, like twelve different languages you can give them to do. People often. So, uh, I think everybody will be. Um, least with it because I know, you know, a bit frustration, you know, every time I had a nickel, somebody's, I know about that. Uh, they, they at home. But it's on Facebook or any other application, so. Um, related to that, I just wanted to shout out to Bob from Vital Signs. And it's a different topic, and Steve Wood. Last time on Wednesday morning, we told him about the signs, he had it ready by, by eight, Friday morning, he put it out. Um, so he dropped everything, responded, so. Um, nice to have people like that in the town, and Steve would pick them up. Put them all over the time. Now, we still might have to do that. But at least, uh, we can have this mechanism so that. Somebody calls and says, I didn't know that, sign up for this. I mean, it'd be quite easy, just, you know, I knew it because. I have it in my own town, I mean, like, that's that too many to sign up. Go in there, click on it. Put your cell phone number, and then also, uh, then click on whatever things you want. You can get it through text, through email, through voice.
Okay, so they can, they could call a home, a home number.
All those, so. Um, because Tina mentioned the seniors.
Yes.
Also, so.
Right, right, right.
Which I think will be. Steps about what we have today.
Yeah. Yeah, but they don't get the message then, I don't know what else to do, maybe skywriting? Pull a banner. I don't know.
But I, it, it'll take a while for people to.
Yeah.
Get traction, but the more people know about it, you can talk about it. Get the word out and it, it'll be easy, you can put it on the website and put it, you are called, your phone, I mean. Then same way you can just. You're not, you know, pleased with it, you don't have to get out of it. And they can select what you want, that's the beauty of it, you don't get messages every day, every hour. Can pick whatever you, since you want to announce that feature that if you don't want to be disturbed in the night, you can.
Uh, okay.
I think except for the Tony, the warning, you on the.
Probably want to know that one. So tend to be three AM messages, so I think, yeah.
All right, um. You all have, I just wanted you to take a look at it, Mr. Mayor requested the ICHR. Just to go in the tax bill. Uh, this is pretty much the same that you saw in the, uh, what are the audience presentation. Uh, but we have added to the board of it, we have showed it separately, the amount of debt service for the board of it. And then also the shared. Cost. Common. Uses, so all that is combined, so it shows sixty percent of the true cost of the board of it. Similar to what we did last year, so that will go for your request in the tax bill.
Right?
Another good news? They know.
Yeah.
Much do you want me to say this the next time?
No, good news, let's hear the good news.
So, uh, thank you, Councilor Russell, join me on a beautiful day, walking, it's still creek with. Nick Captain Rhodes and Steve Wood and. Mike Delrin.
Mike, yeah, and you sure that's good news?
It's good.
No, okay.
Good morning. We have.
Yes.
The, um. Lishby area. It's still creek, you and I walked.
Yes. Yeah.
Accessible place.
At the place?
Yeah. It's hundred square feet, it goes all the way.
Right.
Talked about sign it, we talked about, I'll, I'll put a map in all that.
Yeah, yeah.
And so.
But back to the bridge there, that little bridge?
This side of the bridge. And, uh, one of the things, uh, also Russell brought up, the kids.
A hundred square feet. Not a hundred square. About that whole fairway, right? Yeah, okay, better. I was gonna say, that's a real little part. I was gonna say, I can't believe there's agreement on that one, so good.
And then, um, what we build, uh, I think Steve would only reach out to the high school. Uh, kids who do the. There's either we could reroute them or it happens three times a year or something. We could put signs and say between two and five or two and four. This area will be closed for the class, and so everybody went. Um, we'll work that out. I mean, these are details to be worked out, but what I'm pleased to. See and hear that everyone's compromising. Really thankful to Mary Captain Rhodes, that's beautiful, really good approach on this and supported the whole initiative, so. Remember, we passed that of the, only for six months.
I know.
Space at last, and you have a scout end of July. So by, in that July, we have to have all this ready. I'll bring some maps, I'll show you what we're planning to do. And I, I think, uh, it'll be pretty cool compared to what we have, I think, people start using it.
Yeah.
It's a great parking facility there, any kind of accessibility, put some benches, maybe create some signs.
And make sense there.
I'm sure there'll be some group who will not like it, but.
I mean, the field's nicer, it's nicely manicured and, you know, the fairway, it's golf fairway, it's beautiful. That's great. Good? That's great, okay, beautiful. Special committee reports, what do we?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, my effort to be brief.
Oh, well, you're.
Spotted a couple of. So I wanted to go over a few things.
Sure. Charlie might kill you, but I, I will tear with it, that's all right. That's a big report.
Yeah, we appreciate all that work, again.
Anyway, right, that was it. Oh, oh, we're still the affordable housing, right, that's still. It's actually great, this conversation.
As far as the public hearings on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth is public hearing.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good, I think that's it for that? Yes, couch communication.
Question, I want to thank Steve Woods and his crew. I was involved in two projects, one of Veterans Park for a golf par bail. And he cleaned up after my people, his concrete, and then approached and set the granite, run into giant porcupines. Wasn't what they were supposed to do, made a huge mess. And his guys ran in here and did a beautiful job restoring everything, lightning speed, everything. And last weekend. Couldn't reach the help for the Eagle Scout project, the cheer brother.
Oh.
And Steve met the scout and myself and other folks after hours. Got some material there for the scout and fortified setup, you need the whole thing, what?
That's good.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you, Charlie, I create work and, uh. And, uh, Tilkon donated the concrete, right? I did want to say real quick to his teacher appreciation, I want to say thank you all the teachers, all the work they've done. Still continues to be a very tough job out there with. A lot of the, so thank you very much for all your efforts. Educating your children. Those come out, well, they better run a couple of years. Teachers, yes, dude. Uh, let's hope it gets better from here.
Anyone else? Very briefly on the economic development front, so, uh, I think it was last meeting, we had spoken with Chris Edge, our economic development director, about. It's all in Berlin.
What happened?
Of the initiative, and I, uh, recently, just, uh, on, so, my various social media outlets, just looked at. The online presence of, of the hashtag and their, um, various Facebook, Twitter. Instagram outlets, and it seems to be growing and doing well, and I think it's a really good opportunity to showcase the talented ways that maybe people haven't seen. Previously. Hurting stuff.
Okay. Number town and state, place to live. Right up there with Cos Cob and, and Greenwich, so. I almost like Cos Cob. Except for, no, we should, well, there's a few little differences, but, but it's okay. Uh, you know, it took some, you know. And that's the, to that website. Now it's all good, Berlin is, uh, looks, looking good. Okay, um, acceptance of the April nineteenth, uh, minutes. Well, don't, I'm sorry, anybody else? Comments? I'm sorry, no? Acceptance of April nineteenth.
You have motion to accept the, that's from people like two thousand twenty-two.
Second. All those in favor? I, I, pose. Okay, so we'll, we'll should go on executive session.
Okay, my motion to go on executive session, and the litigations for, uh, general connected state statute section. One, two hundred sixteen, strategy negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation that has.
Second on that? All right.
Invited in.
Invited in is, uh. Ray. She can't get out of the. Yeah, definitely, yeah, you know, he said, he said, he can't, he can't hide.
Okay.
Kate gets the lead?
Yeah.
You're lucky, it was one of the night.
All right, all in favor, right?
Yes, all favor.
Jumping off and jumping on.
All right, thanks, Donna.
Okay, you're welcome.